We station. Change of venue, I think hopefully the setup will work better, especially from an audio standpoint, I know in. In town hall on the baseline, we were having some audio issues and this was a nice, you know, use of this fabulous building that we have, so thanks for. Rolling with us, I guess. First up, we have a board of assessors meeting to address an abatement. For. Abatement number twenty twenty three dash six for. Map lot zero one two zero zero three dash A. It sounds like the circumstance here is that there was just a, an error with this. Where the incorrect owner was billed and this is an abatement to correct that error. Any other? Context questions?
Who is the split, the split lot that? Now, when she split it, she's actually going to be billing out more because there'll be two separate lots instead of just one.
Okay. Alright, so the recommendation here would be to grant this abatement in the amount of seven thousand six hundred one dollars and fifty one cents. Again, for map lot zero one two dash zero zero three dash A.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second if a discussion.
We have a second, what discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to flesh out the particulars. In fact, in the history, we had one that was very quick like this and we just didn't. As part of the motion, cite all the particulars. So I'd like to just, if it's okay with John, to include. If the lot owners, you know, Brandon W. LaBelle, mailing address one sixty five Agametan Road, the abatement number. The location at one sixty five Agametan Road, the map and lot number one one two dash oh three dash A. And officially, year two thousand twenty three, and the tax shape two thousand, I mean, four one two thousand twenty two. You okay with that, John?
Okay, yes, sorry about that.
And, and also the recommendation of the assessing agent.
Yeah. Yep. We have a motion and a second, any other? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And that wraps up our board of assessors meeting. Moving on to our standard council meeting, we have five counselors present. This evening and we'll move into approving minutes. From our meeting last meeting, which took like a long time.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will move to accept the public hearing. Minutes of August twenty third, two thousand twenty two.
Second. Do a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Any suggested edits for the minutes from our council meeting on August twenty third? Before we take a motion? No edits, so pick a motion.
Can I move to? Accept the town council minutes of August twenty third, two thousand twenty two.
Do a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to signing our treasurer's warrant. I think before we even take up a motion on this, I want to address, or ask Jen to address a couple of things, this warrant seems rather large, but for good reason.
The reason why it's so large is there's two school payments in here for over seven hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. We had to reissue the check to the school, so one got voided, one got replaced, so. Seven hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars can come off the bottom. There's also two bond payments in there for the rural bonds and the, this building that we're handling right there.
Madam Chair, I move, we sign the treasurer's warrant dated nine eight twenty twenty two in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty three cents.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of signing treasurer's warrants, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Reports and correspondence, I'm assuming there's none? Cool. Public comments, so anyone here or on the phone that wants to speak about anything that's not on our agenda later? Steve, go ahead.
My good evening, Steve Bays, one sixty Ragquack Road. I wanted to thank you for putting the referendum question on related to the appropriation of funds for Great Lakes Land Trust to help. Potentially purchase land along the Santa Falls River. Many, as you know, many. South Browick residents are members of the land trust and that would be well supported. Thank you for doing that. Secondly, I wanted to come with a concern about FOA requests I had submitted to the town over a month ago. I believe all of you are trained on FOA and you know what I'm talking about, what the requirements are. But on the eleventh, I had submitted a request to the coenforcement office and Tim and Jennifer were copied on, on most of these correspondence. On the fifteenth, I was told it would be sent to me. I continued to follow up on the twenty second. Asked Tim and Jennifer the status. On the twenty ninth, Tim replied, he checked. Thought I had picked it up already. On the sixth, again, I asked Tim and Jennifer, Janelle, Jennifer, Janelle, the, the status. I've heard no reply. So I would ask that you would. Ask Tim or confirm to me that your support of, you know, them following the, the state law regarding FOA requests and there's a. I formally used, I submitted that. Our town form says there will reply within five days. And I'm waiting for that reply, so.
So it's an operations level, not been answered here in the meeting. That's for Mr. Bates to come in and see me in my office as the manager of day to day operations and I'll address that. If the form says we'll respond in five days, the response of the state law and state statute, it would acknowledge his response and tell him what we're going to get for it. Far as I know, I'll defer, as I've heard this whole, this involved a permit that Steve was asking for. And my impression is I thought he'd be given the information minus two pages that were lost and couldn't find. But I'll ask you, I guess, to. Can you provide any more information or?
Sure. I'm not sure I have more information than that. I know that he. It's my understanding he received documents from our admin. Everything but those two pages that weren't in the file that he requested. And I know that it was followed up that he, that it was corresponded that. We didn't have them. So I'm not really sure what's missing from that.
This is two separate requests, it's a two separate request.
Madam Chair, this is an operations, if you should be on my level, you should.
How many more emails should I send?
You shouldn't.
Sorry, sorry, can you just let him finish?
You should come in and see him. You should make an appointment, come in and see him and they're always, we're more than glad to meet with him and get this resolved.
Okay, sorry, Steve, I just want to make clear, so you submitted two separate requests.
Two separate ones. The first one was replied to timely.
Okay.
Within days.
Okay.
The second one was based on comments that the CEO had made. She had reviewed these permits. And made a decision based on them. So I asked for those permits. I could find nothing in the minutes. For the planning board related to them or them ever being approved. So I asked for them. That's what I'm waiting for. Why should I have to go see Tim to submit a FOA request? And why couldn't Tim tell me that three weeks ago that I had to come and see?
So I, I just want, want to make clear, because you were talking about having heard from Tim. That you were going to be receiving documents and it sounds like that was related to the request that has already been completed.
It was one completed before this second request.
Okay, so all the dates that you read off are related to the second request?
Obviously.
Is it, was it clear to the staff that there's two separate requests?
I resent that form in a follow up with Tim and Jennifer, the last follow up to you, I resent the form.
Okay, sorry.
The form again.
Was it clear to you all that there were two separate requests?
Nope, not at all. I thought we were dealing with the same issue, the same permit, the same event. I was, I get two hundred and fifty to five hundred emails a day. I'm sorry if Mr. Bates, I didn't put him at the top of that pile. I had some others to do, again, this is operations. Whether he called me or sees me, I thought, I reminded Jenny, I thought that this had been followed up with a permit code issue. But again, it's an operational issue at my level. We're attempting to answer this and do it correctly. There's no intention here to slight Mr. Bates and then me forming a manner. I was under the impression we were talking about the same document, so.
So I thought it was the same request too.
Okay.
And I thought that the permit that he's talking about, I thought that went with the first set of documents and I didn't really see what went with the first set of documents. So if he's missing something, if he wants to reach out or just let us know exactly what he's looking for, I can send it right over first thing tomorrow. I wasn't aware that it was a separate.
We're here, okay, yeah, okay.
You can refer to the August twenty second email, the August twenty sixth email, Tim's twenty ninth email, or my September sixth, how many more emails to clear?
I, I think we've addressed the issue. It sounds like there was just some confusion on the staff's part of that there were two separate requests, apologies. They're going to be on top of it and get you what you need.
And if Tim wants to meet with me, he can reach out to me and tell me that that's a requirement. I shouldn't have to come to you to find out I have to meet.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Brett Crop, thirty four Liberty Street. I just wanted to come in and talk about the crosswalks. I've. Talked about pedestrian safety a lot, but I just wanted to highlight two crosswalks down, one is right at County House Park, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, and then there's another one right at Park Street. Incidentally, there was a accident, a pretty bad accident today right at Park Street. I'm not sure exactly what happened there, but. These two crosswalks, in my opinion, are very unsafe. And unfortunately, these are the only two crosswalks that people on the side of, with Liberty Street, Old Mill Street, Vine Street. Even down to Braddles, their only safe way of getting to downtown. So I would ask that the town look at these crosswalks and see if there's ways that we can improve them, improve signage, other ways.
Park Street was the other one.
It's at Liberty Street, right at the County House. That one's more troublesome. One is, they don't have a sign coming through the direction of New Hampshire indicating that there's a crosswalk and it goes from thirty five to twenty five miles an hour right at the crosswalk. You know, I use that a lot, going to companies, going to downtown, you wait, you sit there and you wait. You sort of have to get into the crosswalk, like literally stand in the crosswalk to make sure that people stop. Coming from the other direction, there's very little line of sight, because I don't know if you guys know, coming down, there's a curve. So there's probably like two hundred feet, a hundred and eighty feet of line of sight, but people are. As you saw today, there was an accident, I don't know if it was speed related, but I just walked down that street, the cars were probably going thirty, thirty five, forty miles an hour. Main Street, just south of, on the hill going from the intersection of two thirty six to four, coming down towards New Hampshire. It's basically all downhill, so. I go twenty five on there and then people are just riding my tail as I go. I've heard from other residents on that street that it's pretty bad and they even said that they hear cars, their brakes squealing as.
Dailing.
Yeah, okay, so you live on the main street then. It's, it's not a pleasant experience going. Walking up and going downtown or even crossing it, so. I mean, the basic thing that we could do, or my suggestion would be just to have signage, at least coming from the New Hampshire side. That would just bring out, bring us up to state guidelines, proper signage. But there may be other things to explore and I know that there's been pedestrian studies, pedestrian safety studies. That study didn't look at and actually called my class, so he said that it didn't look down on Main Street below two thirty six. And four, or the two thirty six intersection, so. There's three crosswalks or four crosswalks that count one of the church that are below that, that we should probably look at, just to make sure that, you know, all that we have. That people can access other areas of town and not just be isolated to where they only feel safe, so.
Thank you, Brett. I'm just taking a look at the scope for. Sabego Technics is a consulting firm that's going to be kind of assessing our entire downtown area. I think that these intersections are in scope for that. I'm looking at.
It goes all the way down to the line.
Yeah, so as far as like assessing the situation that will be included in that assessment, we don't have that now, it's in the works. I'm wondering, is there anything, is, is that a quick thing that we could do? I think the signage coming in, coming from New Hampshire, is that something that we can put up? And perhaps maybe, like, I don't know if we have any funds for any more of the light up crosswalks or anything like that.
Yeah, I think. Part of the, the vice versa is people come from downtown to go to County House Park and then there's other potential developments going in around that, so. Just giving people access to the park and the, you know, other areas, like there's a pond that's thirty acres down the street on Vine Street that. You know, if someone wanted to walk from downtown to go, you know, kayaking or swimming, that would be nice.
What was your last name?
Crop, C R O P P.
And best telephone number to reach you?
Seven one six. Eight six seven. Zero zero three five.
Okay. We'll take a look at it, we'll get back to it sometime.
Thank you, Simon.
Thanks.
Just, just kind of historically. Liberty Street, as it approaches Main Street, is a really wide throated roadway.
Yeah.
And. So perhaps Sabego Technics could take a look at. And you end up with, like we have in front of.
The tattoo placement.
Yeah. You have that, that kind of easing, so, so people don't come in perpendicular and have to stop, so kind of, it promotes a roll through. It's going right towards the park, so we can just bring that up to Sabego Technics and say it's, it's, it's some street geometry. That we could do so that people come in at ninety degrees and have to stop.
Alright, anyone else public comment? Okay, town managers report.
Madam Chair, request that you move that till the, till the end of the business.
Okay.
The people here to get all this stuff.
Um, any, um, any objection from the council? Take a motion.
No, move, move, move. Town manager report to. After new business number four.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Good suggestion, Tim, thank you. Okay, so we'll dig into unfinished business. Number one, ten Portland Street parking, this was an item that I had wanted to discuss, I was expecting. Karen, I think it was her name to be here, it looks like she's not, so I think we can skip over this item. Without objection, anyone? No action taken.
And I ask one question?
Yeah.
Why do we still have it on here?
She had said her husband was going to be here.
And I had, I had asked to make sure it was on here too. Sorry. And unfinished business number two, zoning performance standards and licensing for medical marijuana registered caregivers, so. This is something that we've had in the works for a long time and we've gotten help from Tammy and Jenny, we're very appreciative for the help. Jenny, on this work, and I know we have a draft in our support docs, but I heard that there's some extra stuff. So I think th- this will certainly not be the last meeting that we talk about this, I'm sure we'll have like a further discussion at a future meeting, but I'd love to. Just kind of get the scoop from you all, if, if, if that's okay, of kind of your approach to this and all of that, that's okay.
So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah. Whoever wants to go.
Well, they worked hard, hard on this, they, they really put a lot of time in it up and I want to thank them both. They really, really went under the covers to the bottom of the pile. And I know both Jenny and Tammy did a lot of research and time and put a lot of hours of effort into making this. And looked at the draft, so the purpose of this was to at least get it to you tonight, have you skim over the first, picked up the page, you know, look at it. And then digest it and then at some point come back and have a more. Meeting, the discussion about whether to do a workshop or no council meeting, but I just, you know, Jenny and Tammy both fulfilled what. The council asked them to do, and I think it's a pretty good document, it's pretty inclusive. They, so I'll turn it over to Jenny and.
I'm not creating a public speaking, I'm just saying that.
Just to say, for the viewing public, just identify yourself.
Sure, Jenny McCabe put in first, not to the tenant go through it. And I'm Tammy Bellman, town plan and firm, South Browick. So all we did is we took exactly what you guys had already established and we went to the Office of Cannabis Policy. Took their guidelines and their rules and regulations and took, just to look at other, you know, towns in the area of the same or cities. What was going on, we added them in, I changed all the. All the words that said marijuana to cannabis, so you can see that throughout the document. The biggest change really on the document is really, maybe like, well, some of it is on page two of who it actually goes to, so if you look down under review procedures, A, B, C. It actually goes to the correct people for review, instead of the town clerk, it goes to the town planner now.
Sorry, question, is this, um?
Turn our documents, if you're looking for page two. Add on to what we got, if you look at page two.
Oh, this is in addition to what we have online, got it, okay, thank you. So what we have online is like the first.
This, this, this is the real deal.
Yeah. And then.
Yes, you printed it offline, yes it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Plus the three pages, there we go.
Yes.
It's like waste disposal, we just added that, always receptacle on site must have a metal cover and be locked at all times, that's state law. Okay, there's just a few things that were added there. The most you're going to see is in the definitions part, and it was really just writing those definitions. And changing.
Is that this document that was just given to them?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's this document that was presented through this week.
Okay, um, if we could get just the whole thing. The entire document electronically, next couple of days, that would be your problem.
I'll get it to you, Tim, and you can send it right over.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then you'll see on page nine two, as you're reviewing. The, so we have minor harm, major harm, and then we changed this to be just its own medical cannabis caregiver home occupation. So the standards are all listed below.
Um. Remind me, has this, has the planning board reviewed this? As this?
No, this is licensing, this is the.
Oh, this is just like.
Licensing, which you were going to tackle.
Got it, got it.
The planning board, Mr. Chairman, correct?
Yes.
You weren't tasked with this, this was licensing with the council, you were tasked with the, after, sorry.
You won't be responding to the planning board?
Yes.
Please.
Sure, so the planning board reviewed the zoning portion and we approved it back in April, then we had a workshop and. Had that last workshop a month, month and a half ago, the board. Wanted some clarification on the licensing, which I think is before you thank.
Yep.
And so, as your per view. I just want to make sure that what the planning board advanced, and I believe it is, it is, the zoning portion, you should have there. Tonight, or you will have it shortly, so.
The zoning portion is in there. Those are in the last three or four pages that you just received, starting on page eight. It lists the start footage for the retail area, if there's one care medical cannabis caregiver versus two or more.
We'll, we'll, we'll take the whole document, put it together electronically and send it to you.
This is.
And that'll be the licensing and the, the zoning stuff.
Correct.
Okay, great.
That'll be the final draft document, you, the. Have a meeting on review, make changes.
Got it.
I do want to thank Tammy and Jennifer, their, their effort, and I know they were.
Yes, thank you both and thank you to the planning board for work spent on the zoning stuff. So I think. Definitely want to get the full electronic document out so we can all review. Definitely want to get the full electronic document out so we can all review. Uh, and then I think, just given how much this is, I think it'd be good to have a workshop to talk about the whole thing together and just make sure. We're all aligned, um, what does everyone think?
I, I have some questions I'd like to pose tonight.
You want to raise questions tonight, or do you want to save them?
Yeah, I think it's, well, well, we have.
Absolutely.
Tammy and Jenny here and others, just to, uh, they're not expensive.
Yeah.
Have you finished? I, I didn't want to be cutting you off. Yeah, you're also, okay, great, thank you. Sometimes that can like kind of roll through and people don't have the full opportunity, so going on to page one, uh, looking down on definitions. On the prevailing laws and rules, uh, there's still. Now, this may refer to like the two thousand eighteen law where we're still calling things marijuana. But was that changed by the state to cannabis?
It wasn't, and.
Okay, so that's, so we're square with that. In terms of defining it as, as the various laws relating to marijuana. And, uh, the, the other thing is that we have definitions up front on page one. That are supplemental to the definitions that are proposed on page eight.
Correct.
So will these disappear and become part of?
It will depend if you want them to be merged in together, but because you've got a zoning section. I really believe that if somebody goes to look at the zoning section, they need to have those definitions readily available.
Yeah, what, what, what we do typically is to avoid confusion and having things listed in two different places. It's usually, usually appropriate to include definitions in one forty dash nine. Where all the definitions are for the particular chapter, and that way there, it's all there. Now we can make a reference in the text. To, to go back to one forty dash nine, so people can have a lead to it, but, because we ran into it. Years ago, um, you know, with definitions in chapters, definitions up front, and it became a mess. Where they didn't agree with each other, so I think that that would be a suggestion, uh, just to, 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 uh. Put the definitions in one forty dash nine.
Yeah.
The other thing, um, I, I noticed, this is going ahead a little bit, but I did take the opportunity to go through. Uh, performance standards, uh, under one forty dash sixty seven dot, dot, one. And I just a little latitude, because we're not exactly on that topic, and the same thing under one forty dash sixty seven dot two, which one was. Retail stores versus, uh, cultivation and growing facilities. That, those, both those. That ordinances are not dated because they have, they're littered with marijuana rather than cannabis. So it might be a good opportunity, we're going to a public hearing on things cannabis now, that we just simply go through and. And, and just, you know, do a global search and, and change it out.
Yeah, if you want us to do that, we can certainly do that for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the last thing that I had was that, um, there's not a suggestion for, um. One forty attachment, one, table A, uh, which would actually indicate. Where this can go in town, you know, which zones are appropriate. Was it the intent that the town council is gonna come up with that, or is that something that's gonna be recommended to the council?
No, we can recommend it to you.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, uh, off the top of my head, it seems like the place where. I think we're trying to regulate this in residential zones. And we know that it exists in residential zones, but we're not allowed to know where, so. That will come, so that, that's, that's, that's some place where we have to. Do some work to see what makes sense, and, uh, and it can be exclusionary or inclusionary. And we'll get in trouble one way or the other, uh, no matter what we do, so I just assumed to, uh, to have that all happen as well. I think that's it for right now, and I think that we can go into further detail when we, when we meet specifically and not take the, the council's time and public's time right now.
Sorry, hold on just a second. So I just want to wrap up, so for the, um. Retail stores cultivation, we're gonna find and replace. Marijuana for cannabis, and then, um, for table A, that'll be, that'll go to the planning board for the next meeting, to remain recommendations, or. Are you guys gonna suggest that?
We'll make suggestions, and I don't know if I can get it on the next agenda.
Okay.
The table one.
Okay.
Oh, Jeff Field, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
So, no, I appreciate it, and I, I appreciate the work, you can see the difference as you're reading. Really, you know, you can see your work, so I appreciate that. But as I've spent, I think it came through a couple, a few days ago, and I've spent every day since then looking at, so I kind of want to talk about it, so. Some live questions, um, and some might be just plain old stupid questions, uh, like on page two. Under illustration, I just have a question, maybe it's a typo, maybe it's just my lack of knowledge, one, two, three, four lines down, middle of the page. M C R C that hold an approved line use permit. Is that a thing? What is a line use permit? I didn't know, maybe it's a, a thing, I, um, typo or something, we can go into it, but I was just questioning it. If we don't have an answer, maybe it's just something we need to look.
So, that must have been in the original document, it's something that I didn't even catch on to actually, so we'll update that, it's probably.
It did seem weird to me, that's why I didn't.
It's definitely a typo, but probably not one we caught, we can fix that.
I'm, I'm sure we'll go over all, like, this stuff.
Yeah, but we can put it all of the changes in, and then when we submit it to you guys, at least it's like, oh, perfect, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
The next, um, section was where I, I had some questions too.
Which section?
Sorry, licensing authority.
Okay.
It was really the first kind of two sections where it says all. Of these, all M C R C license applications, whether new or renewal, shall be reviewed and may be approved by the town planner. Then says, all other new license applications will be reviewed and may be approved by the town council after public hearing. I feel like I'm hearing all new will be the planner. And maybe something, if there's a gray area, they will go to the town council, I don't feel like that's clear and I don't understand.
This was part of your original document, so we can look at that and verify it more, we wanted to, instead of the town clerk doing it. Because it involves zoning and everything else, we wanted the planner to be able to do that portion of it.
Yeah.
Just to provide a little context, if you guys didn't have it for the original, I will take the blame, I guess, for the, for the original one that you started with. That was a big, like, kind of copy case steal from another town kind of job, so, um. Apologies. Thank you for looking at it in detail.
I can tell you that, we looked at it so many times, we read it so many times, that eventually you stopped seeing mistakes and just being total.
Absolutely.
And that's what happened here, we'll fix that too.
That's right, yeah, absolutely, I spell everything right in all my speeches until I don't. Then the, the next section down, review procedures. Um, sort of in the middle, that third line, right in the middle, um, it says. Licensing authority and any consulting town officials. Um, I wasn't sure if that needs to be defined, and then we got this, I don't know if that's part of the definitions, or if that's too much in the weeds. Just something to.
I wonder if we should, just, just a suggestion, because if I look down to the, like, that section below, we update the licensing authority, say, the town council. Like, I take that to mean, like, the licensing authority is the town council. You know, so I think we should swap out licensing authority and.
I agree, but if you read it and it's differently, like, just have an open mind about this, okay? Let me read this out loud to you and see if it makes sense this way, okay? So it says, review procedures, the review procedures described below shall be the same for initial license applications as well as renewals unless otherwise indicated. In review license, in reviewing license applications, the licensing authority, which. In here is the town council and it's spelled out below, okay, and any consulting town officials. Officials, okay. May consider the approval standards under this ordinance as well as other applicable local, state, and federal laws for license renewals and licensing records. Up and down to the same, so when I read through that, that's how I read it, but we can further clarify that if you want, but that's, I think that's how it kind of reads. If it makes sense.
No, that's, that's, that's fine, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because of where mine was, my mind was going is in the section above, I'm seeing the licensing. Authority is the planner and the town council, and then it gets a little wonky down there, and that's why the clarification is great. I personally, it's nice having the black to black and white, but sometimes wiggle room is always nice to.
So we can fix that if you like, it's up to you guys, um, but it does read clear of what's happening there when you read the whole.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think, but I'm not sure, so.
I, me personally, I say either, and we're gonna be looking at it again, a big problem, again, as like. I keep getting stuck on it, and I keep getting these guys stuck on it too.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, or we can always put something else in there, like an alternative sentence there, and see if you like it better. And then if we don't, we can just figure out what sentence works best for everyone, yeah, that'd be okay too.
My notes are not clear on that one, uh, but page three, um, I think my biggest concern was. Section G.
Okay.
And like, this is where you guys are. I just want to make sure we're legally okay, and the biggest hangup there is where it says. And really, anybody involved in this can enter the premises without notice, that's where I was concerned about.
Here's, here's what's clear about that, okay? So it says, any municipal official with authority to make recommendation grant licenses or enforce this or other municipal ordinances regarding M C R C. Operations shall have the authority to enter the licenses or applicants premises without notice to make any inspection reasonably necessary to ensure compliance. So that is in the beginning stages, so if you can, you're on a home op, um, for caregiver license at your home, and you have your five hundred square feet of canopy. O C P, you know, plus your, you know, car, whatever, so you were doing this at the home grow. I can enter your building at any time without notice if I get a complaint. Whether it becomes a build complaint, you have an electrician, a lot of times, like, okay, so. The state electrical inspector, a lot of times will call us on this, they'll be like, hey, I just got a notification for a six hundred amp service at a residential, doesn't need the code, I need you to run, take a look at it. So we'll go out and take a look, they have to let us enter at that point because of how they fall under O C P, however. Like plumbing, any of those things, order anything, the order part becomes a little strange because once they have their. Product, plants growing, whatever they have in there, we're no longer allowed to enter without notice. So during the bill, during, during the permitting process, during, you know, the filling application. All that, we are allowed to enter at any time for this use.
Should that be, should that be?
I said it needs to be clarified.
Yeah.
That's not how I read that.
Yeah.
Specifically, I guess, clarify a little more.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and during the build process or something like that.
Yeah.
That might clarify that.
So that came from your original document before, um, and it makes sense in my mind because of unadmission, you know what I mean, so.
This is why it's different, yeah. Yeah.
I think that was the major, the major things that I, that I was kind of hung up on and wanted to clarify already on.
I did, yeah. Thank you so much for coming, um, just under purpose and authority, um, do we need to include, like, may ask, maybe amended? First number, first page. So it's looking under, defining the, under prevailing laws and rules, just, you know, do we need to include as may be amended? For any future. Changes.
I would say not yet, so if you have any good opinion. No, not yet, simply because. When the state starts changing their laws and regs, it's easier to come in and say, okay, let's look at it, we may like it better. But we may not want the entire law to be adopted, as long as the local municipalities laws and regs are tighter than the state. You don't technically have to adopt the state regs, because ours are tighter. They're more defined, they are more limiting for unfortunately our community members, but it keeps us in a better. So everybody's given a fair shake and whatever they want potentially to do. So, and, and with this, all we're hoping that they're gonna do this year is change marijuana to cannabis.
So your recommendation is to not put in the as amended?
Not, not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, they, they've been making so many changes every single year, every time they come in. They, it might be just a tweak here and a tweak there, but it all funnels down through us. When they start slowing down with the rules and they become a little more standardized for everybody. Then it would be able to, like the building codes, to adopt them as the state adopts them. But now they, they, they adopt in thirty or ninety days later, the municipalities have to adopt it. Well, if they don't give us time to get it into the system, so what are we gonna do?
Yeah, and I would hate to see a situation where any town, not just Southbury, but put as amended, and then they amended their rules and regulations, and they don't agree with them. And then they have to, you would have to allow that in the town until it was fixed. I think amending as.
So just so I'm clear, so if we, if we were to put in as amended, the state were to change their laws, then that's sort of like lights a fire under us, of like, we have to then. If, if we for whatever reason want to make a change to our stuff accordingly, we have to do it like real quick, because.
It's a lot easier for you to wait for it to come down the line and then amend it as necessary.
Yeah.
So it doesn't mean that's gonna light a fire, but you just don't know.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, also on page one for the, under the definition, there's a definition of disqualifying, disqualifying drug offense, but it's not mentioned explicitly in the administration piece, so I'm just wondering. Do we need to? We can just not so put it there if you want, but it is under state law and they can't even pull the card. Or on. Three hundred renewal licenses, as I'm reading it, um, renewals will be put to public hearings or not?
Yeah.
So. As a board, you decide what you want to do there, a lot of towns require them to come up for renewal, but under home op business. We don't require home op businesses to come back yearly for a new permit, so if we were gonna require. You know, under medical, you know, caregiver, cannabis caregiver, then we would have to put that also in our home op standards as well. So if you got, if you all want to do that, then that's fine, but it has to go in the standard as well.
But under the, sorry, under the home op standard, we would call it out just specifically for.
It would just, yeah, it would just be in the new medical cannabis, yeah, sorry. Is that something you want to see? I would like to.
Why, you don't do it to any other home op, and here we go again, it's a business, we can only state a name, why are we changing the rules for one business?
Let's have this be a discussion, a workshop discussion item, I think. We'll have lots of.
Um, I know under, also under application requirements, G, a description of the premises which the licenses slot, and sought, including the plan of the premises. I was looking at other, um, towns, and they just kind of explicitly spell the location of the utilities. Such as where the power is, so on and so forth, and then as advisable by the Southbury Town officials. I don't know if we need to be that in our face, but it might be wise to define it. The description of the premises, um, there's a couple of different reasons for it, so when you think of a description, um, you think of like. Let's use another community, they have laptops on their fire trucks, okay, none of those fire trucks. Every commercial space or, you know, a business like this on the home off or whatever. They, they put in the address and it comes up. What it gives them is a building layout so that our life safety officials have to go into the building. They knew exactly where they're going and what's what in there. They know what the, you know, the room with the most lamps are and they know, they know it all. That's why that's there. We could go further and have them spell out utilities. We can do all that if we'd like. We can just add that in and again, you guys can just see if you like it. I'll down in there. But you have to be careful because some of it is protected. Yeah.
And then just something for us to consider on page five approval and operating, operating requirements. You know, a license holder shall comply with all of these requirements during the term of the license. And kind of in reading other ordinances, it was a need for a consequence if they don't, like is there a fine? Like what, is there any type of enforcement? Page five approval and operating requirements, the second sentence.
And you're saying there's an enforcement.
Yep. So enforcement should definitely be added there. We'll add that. There is an enforcement.
You have it right there.
For operations of M C R C business without the required license. But that, that's talking about without a license, not violating the license. There needs to be enforcement there. Okay, we'll add it.
And then just one last thing, the, under the same kind of approval and operating requirements, B, a display of license. Again, it's, if it's not there, then why? So if they don't display the license. What's our response? Approval and operating requirements under B.
So that was something that was in there. And I'm gonna tell you that we're never gonna know whether or not that municipal license is there or not. Because we're not allowed to enter the building. Once they have their product in there, it really comes down to the O C P at that point. And it's nothing they're gonna be looking for. So we can do something about it, but we're never gonna know whether or not they hang it. We can really just at this point probably scratch that. Doesn't even really need to be there.
Jenny, sorry, I just followed on that. So what I'm hearing from you is that like during the. Like build opening, like I'm not using the right terms that like that, that's the point in which like you would potentially have like the. Ability to go in and check things out, inspect. But then as soon as they become operational and have product, then we have no. Control. I, I don't know if that's the right word, but we have no ability to look into anything unless, are there any situations in which we are triggered to?
So in the constructions, in the construction stage, we can go in at any time.
Yeah.
They have to let us in.
Yeah.
Once they start putting product in there, we, if we receive any complaints, they go directly to the O C P. They're allowed to enter the building and go check it out.
And that's, that's obviously a very cannabis specific.
That is.
Thing. Okay.
And they're very protected.
Yeah. So there's nothing, so post-construction, all complaints, all anything is handled by?
O C P, except for odor complaints and odor mitigation. So if we get any of those, then we can handle those by a letter and you'll have so many days to comply against the.
Okay. So odor is the only.
Thing that we would.
Issue that.
So we don't know how many cans they have. We don't know anything that goes on in that building at that point.
Okay. I mean, as part of her certificate of occupancy, when she does her final inspection before they bring in the product. Hopefully they're gonna have their certificate out, but if the state hasn't gotten it to them yet, of course they won't.
Yeah, but the O C P doesn't even look for it.
Right.
They won't, but they don't care. Right. We can, we can leave it there. You're talking about B?
Yeah.
Back to B. Okay, we can leave that there, but and we can make them do it.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's hard to have something in your ordinance that there's no way to import. Yeah. And it's, you know.
Yeah.
You know, you can always request it, strongly request it. I have done that with registering certain documents. Your kind of registry of deeds when they come through the planning board, especially if it's been a controversial subject. A lot of them will listen because it alleviates a whole lot of problems for that person doing the development or the function or whatever they wanna do. But trying to get these folks to actually comply with it, they know they're protected. Right. They know that they don't have to do that portion of it. But as long as the town knows they've got the permit and everything's okay with it. They usually keep it in their records, you know, short of a unfortunate fire coming through there. You know.
Yeah.
Again, this was the one that was my biggest hangup with this G on page three. And we're kind of on that.
Page three?
Yeah, kind of on that topic about the entry. Just make me feel better about it. Municipal official, what is that?
Yeah.
London? Municipal one.
I feel like I'm a municipal official as a town councilor. I just don't want to be in this case.
You're a municipal officer and a municipal official. I'm a municipal official. Jennifer and Tim are municipal officials.
Okay, we're both. So that means that my neighbor next door, cause that's who these are. These are our neighbors next door can have to open their kitchen door to me and tomorrow Jack and then Mallory. Correct?
We don't have the. Yeah, I, I got, I had the initial same thought, Jeff, but then I saw the with authority to blah blah and I don't.
You don't have.
We don't have that authority.
You don't have the authority. I don't have the authority as town manager. She's got the authority as code enforcement. She's got the authority as town planner. Police planner has the authority as law enforcement officials. You don't, I don't. That's why people said to me, well, Tim, why don't you go on an inspection and go? Look, I'm town manager. I have no authority to do any inspections at all. She does. She can invite me along. But it's by sworn authority and it's not within the scope of the authority or deeds.
But only until the plants are, once the plants, once the plants are in, that becomes moved. Correct. So.
So what I'm hearing from you is when you read through it, it doesn't really make sense. So it wouldn't make sense out in the public either. We're gonna fix that. We're gonna make that more clear and more black and white. It shouldn't be this gray and we're gonna fix that.
I just, excuse me though, Madam Chair. I think you're actually inserting the word any, silent in parentheses in front. If you're concerned, we would say any municipal official.
It does, it literally does say any municipal official.
Well, any should be taken away.
Yeah. I think, I think that's a great point, Jenny, though, to what you're saying. It's like. We, we want all of this to kind of be easily and well understood by. Joe Schmo reading this, not.
Fifth grade.
Yeah. I mean, we're like slightly more, only slightly more like first in this than, you know, our typical, but thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And, and that's my thing. I know that, that, that would be the question to have in these on the street hearings too. And I wanna be, be like.
Yeah, I suggest taking the word any authorized.
Sure.
Authorized municipal officials or authority to, then I would have authorized by authority, by God description, by statute, by code, by something. That would be.
Any other?
Yeah, I have a couple more, minor details, but if you go to page five, top of the page, I. Just, this is just English for me. I don't like the idea of having something stated and negative. I'd rather have it be positive. So I'd rather have it be something to the effect, doesn't have to be this, but odor must be mitigated as opposed to has not been.
Okay.
And, and the other real, real minor one is that when I checked out the table, table A, I went back to the map and the B one zone. And on, on the document, it says proposed Ovaly District, Kegger Ovaly District. So proposal should be just taken out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just find these little nuggets as you go through stuff.
Yeah. You know? It's good we have so many eyes, I guess.
It really is. Yeah.
Any other comments or anything else?
Thank you, work.
Thank you. This has been so, so, so helpful to us, even you guys just being here to answer our questions. I feel like I have like the most clarity on this than that we've had and ever. So thank you. Um, okay. So we, we threw a lot of, some small, some bigger edits at you all. Hopefully you can incorporate those whenever you can and get us like the updated electronic document. I want to, I think, I do think we need to kind of smush everything together and still have a workshop. On this topic to kind of tackle everything in detail. I'm, I'm kind of just wondering from, from planning board perspective, from your perspective, like timing wise, what makes sense to, for that? If you have any opinions.
Well, probably next week before we can get all the edits in.
Yep. Okay, fair. So I'm not rushing you, by the way. I wanna genuinely wanna know what it works for you guys.
And planning board right now is booked out until October.
Yep. So like, would like late October work?
It would probably be.
Yeah. I'm just looking to see when.
So we have, and planning board is booked, booked on the fourth. Yeah, you have a meeting. No, that's Wednesday.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at the end of October before I can get a new project into the planning board.
Okay, so could we do October eighteen for that one?
But.
More in traffic, okay.
In general, I heard the B one overlay.
Jack was just making a suggestion in our ordinance. It still says proposed. We just need to get rid of proposed in front of it. We're not, we're not rehashing it. It's just. Yeah.
So I got other stuff, October, I'm gonna present you tonight. We're gonna have traffic studies. I'm looking to do that on the eighteenth public hearing for traffic study.
Okay.
I gotta get that done so they can get moving on that. So the reality, this will probably not show up till November first.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest November first to have a dedicated workshop for merit, sorry.
Cannabis.
Cannabis, retail caregivers and licensing.
My assumption, Madam Chair, you want the planning board there too or not?
I think it, I mean.
Well, they're just invited.
Yeah, I, 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 does anyone have an opinion on the planning board joining us or?
I, I think it's fine.
Yeah, well, you're invited. Join if you want to. Okay, so let's plan on six thirty on Tuesday, November first. That's an off week for us and. With the planning board will meet on the second. Yeah. So we'll, we'll plan to have a workshop with planning board optional on October, sorry, November first, six thirty P M. Sorry for everybody.
I might be late.
Okay.
Media opening day of year season.
You're gonna get one first thing in the morning. I remember use real bullets.
I'm an afternoon hunter. Let's sleep in the morning.
Thanks, Ken.
Yes, thank you so much. Any other, anything else on cannabis, registered or topic?
Thank you guys. Have a great night.
Yeah. All right, new business number one. We need to sign the warrant for our municipal election on November eighth.
It's appropriate.
Yeah.
I would move to. Five, what are we doing?
Sign the warrant calling the municipal election for November eighth.
So move. Second.
We have motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I wonder what would happen if you guys said no and we didn't do it.
I really don't wanna be here. The barber would probably want to. Okay.
Guarantee attendance at the next meeting.
Yeah, for real. Okay, number two, action on liquor license for the stage house in.
Madam Chair, I move we accept or sign the liquor license for the stage house in located in two twenty four Main Street, South Borough. Their business in good standing. There's been no issues noted to us from the chief of police.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion thousand five zero. Number three, sale of twenty-two Bell Marsh Road. So it sounds like we have a town property at tax map location zero zero four dash zero two seven dash B zero zero. The address is specifically twenty-two Bell Marsh Road and. We have an butter who is interested in purchasing that property for the current assessed value and. This does, selling the property to an butter does fall under the, what am I thinking of? The.
Two, A, two.
Tax acquired property disposal.
Our way, yeah, the ways that we can. Oh, thank you. This stuff is right in the document, sorry. Did that summarize what the situation is?
Correct.
Any, any other info we need?
Oh, they just came in and very interested. They own, like I said, their butters. They originally were talking potentially lots. We told them that we've lost. You see the amount of money that they've lost. We're not in the land real estate business. We need to stop, you know, selling some of this land to get revenue back.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is that. They're interested right now, a good price, I'll knock it out.
Their kids live next door to them. And this is the lot next door. So they just wanna make it so that no one will build there and it's kind of have a family plan vision.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I move to allow the town manager to sell twenty-two Bell Marsh Road, map zero zero four, tax zero twenty-seven, tax E zero zero. For one hundred percent of the assessed value in accordance with A one fifty-eight point two A two. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And our last item on new business is set a date for public information needing for traffic control.
October eighteenth. So Sabego techniques would like to do a public hearing. But the only ones to give these public hearings are you folks. So. I'd like to schedule a public hearing to open to the public so that Sabego techniques can come in and hear the public's input. And we'll advertise it. They give us a month to put it out there.
Okay.
Not really, not essentially a public hearing that you're putting on, but you'll be there for kind of. I didn't know how else to get it to where I wanted to go. So it's not really a public hearing. Any ideas?
What do we call it? A public informational meeting?
It's really more a public informational meeting, but I still wanted to schedule three.
Yes.
So it's an official, official docu, official act by the council.
Okay. And, but Sabego techniques will kind of be facilitating.
They're gonna run the whole thing, but I want you there.
Yeah.
To certainly hear the input from the public.
Yeah.
It'll be an opportunity for the public to give their input on traffic conditions, traffic flow. Sidewalk safety, whatever. We'll try to get it out to as many people as we can get it out of us.
Great. Okay. Given that, do we need a motion to schedule it?
Can I make a comment on this?
Yep.
Let's very, that's one. So. You are our town representatives. Town council gets more information than the general public gets. So ultimately, that council, county council's opinion is controlled. One way or the other.
Okay. Thank you. Were you gonna say?
It's one of the time.
I was gonna suggest six thirty at, six thirty on the eighteenth, usual time. Okay. And we'll hold that.
The dog will be tired by six thirty. Probably I'll be here.
If you need a motion, I'll make a motion. But you can just, you can just state it.
Okay. If we do it on the third floor. Like, have you guys talked to Sabego techniques? Like, are we gonna, do we want this to be a virtual meeting? Like, do we?
It's an in attendance meeting.
An in-person meeting.
They have to come and the Sabego techniques will be taking notes and I think it's a, the purpose of scheduling a meeting is not a Zoom meeting with, you know, someone can call or email. It's, you know, they wanna get a mass group of people, see if they can, who's interested to come in and say the piece. So. You know, we'll do whatever. We'll put out flyers, we'll put out information at the transfer station, a lot of times clerk's office and different places. And hopefully we get some people to come out and say one way or the other what their issues are in traffic. people to come out and say one way or the other what their issues are on traffic and a little bit of deal.
Okay. All right, so we will, we're scheduling a public informational meeting on October 18th, 2022, at 6:30 PM on the third floor of town hall. That will be facilitated by Sabego Techniques, who is a consulting firm who is helping us with the traffic study.
Perfect.
All right. I think that's it, but we have your manager's report.
By the way, so they're working on the water main work on Spring Street, Front Streets, installing the water mains now. Uh, the fire sprinklers have been installed with new storage facility and they're waiting for water mains to go into the rock up. The community center roof leak has been found and been repaired. They are fixing seven, they fixed seven basins, saw basins, and they have several more to go. The police department, in the last two weeks, they've had 11 arrests, six accidents, 64 traffic stops, of which 22 were on Golden Street. They've got a new psychologist on retainer for the P, for the police department, which could be used by anyone in the organization. The chief, police chief Ruger is talking with chief, fire chief Hamel, as it could be beneficial for the fire department as well. Police chief has set up, and it's mandatory that his staff meets with a psychologist annually, once a year, for Baldness Jack. Um, pump command triathlon weekend, it was this past weekend, very well, no accidents or incidents. Sergeant Moore, he's certified as a drug recognition expert, and Dan Aglaria, who has been deployed since last fall, return, is to return to work for first week of October from deployment. Fire department, the last three weeks, had 35 calls, year to date is 287 calls, that's probably more calls than they've had last year at this time. Two new spec, two new applications for membership were submitted last week. The HR department with one more coming in this week, former member returning, and hopefully another coming back shortly. All works out, the fire department will be at 40, I think, calls a five, all the fire members, full staff by the end of 2022, which is remarkable for any part-time pay on a call by the department. Anywhere in the nation right now. Um, and trainings have started back up this month, they kind of laxed off for the summer. Under code enforcement, they've had issued two building permits, six plumbing permits, and Jenny's done 18 inspections. She's investigated several violations and has spent a lot of time reworking the caregiver, cannabis caregiver limits. For Tammy on the planning revision five with a solo ordinance. Uh, new information can continue to come in. And the chair is attempting to finalize the ordinance, and they're working on that. Planning board meeting on 324 Main Street being sent to a third party review. We're working on reviewing the ordinances for the upcoming LID model ordinance, which is out of, I think, the P, the motion has been updated and signed directly with the P. On reviewing the police, the PD agenda from the past year for question to a community member came across the updated site plan review portion. For the L U O, I don't know.
It's not.
That it not been passed out to the town council, on reviewing this document, found a couple of changes might be appropriate this time, we'll review with the planning, planning department chair, follow-up, sidewalk.
Excuse me, what was the, what were you referring to, I missed that.
I, I don't know what it is she's referring to, she gave the initials.
No, but what the overall, what, what, where, where is the site?
Of the L U O. I don't know what that is, portion of the L U O. Then they're not been passed on to the town council.
For, for what?
Just start over on that bullet completely.
Upon reviewing the the department agenda from the past year, a request to a community member came across the updated site plan review portion. Land use ordinance, that's what you're, L U O, land use ordinance, that had not been passed out to the town council. On reviewing this document, um, um, Tammy found a couple of changes that might be appropriate at this time, we'll review. Planning department chair, follow-up accordingly, so there's apparently something on site plan review portion.
Okay.
Land use ordinance that had not been passed out in the future.
Yep.
Uh, they're doing a sidewalk in public area for five watt subdivision on October 5th on Greed Hill. Road eight, on Greed Hill Road, AM is a sidewalk and 7:00 PM is a public hearing. Library, local office in Mary Lou Bagley, came to the library on September 6th and on the 7th for a book discussion group. There'll be a book sale going on from 10:20 to 10:22, various hours listed on the website. Maureen is running Dungeons and Dragons event, the teens on Wednesdays, and all ages on Saturdays. Instead, they've started to plan for Halloween events. Signs have come in for the native garden plants, which show a picture and give a description of the plants. Banning books has become a trend in the schools and some libraries, libraries prepared with a sheet to be filled out, given to an advisory board if any is requested. Uh, there was a late, a leak in the HVAC system, the company was notified and they're waiting on for a callback to fix it. Uh, there's been a problem with the front door closing tightly, and Jay's want to take a look and see if they can adjust that. Recreation, a couple of weeks ago, we had a odor of smell like a stale moth, I guess. Bold, I don't know, we didn't know what it was. Uh, in the building, closed building for three days, so we could find it, so we figure out, we think it was related to a roof leak in one of the, uh, dock, in the dock work for the old head air handling system. Uh, we found a flap that wasn't closing and opening correctly all the time, water had built up in that system. Clean all that out, see if the odor's gone. And the building seems to be back up and running. Um, on the 19th, the new programming coordinator will start with the help of with the F, will start helping art, yoga, music, and science programs, which are starting to unfold. Last week was the first week of song practices, 22 teams and 37 coaches. Great group and a great first week, big game on Saturday morning, fields are looking great, better than they have in a long time. Devin, who's been knowing the field, has helped, not helped, feel upon us to make remetering easier every year, the rec staff is doing CPR training this week, two sessions of all three hours each. Seniors, 65 seniors, I attend a luncheon on Wednesday, and there are 30 seniors going to the American Music City bus tour and trip to Nashville and Memphis on 9/22 and 9/26. Pretty excited.
Yeah.
Assessing, we have received 100 property stabilization program applications and have approved 50 so far. The assessor reporting to the state for audit, she's also reporting on tree growth roster and getting caught up on D games changes. We have now processed tax bills, I'd like to take a second um, and address the board on this LD290 bill. So we have received 100 application, 100 applications so far. We won't, this doesn't close till the end of December. We don't have the staff to do this. And the applications come in, it goes to the part-time assessor who we share with North Borough. He gets put on her desk, and there it gets moved to the administrative assistance desk, which is Amy, who by the way is doing administrative assistance for Public Works, with administrative assistance for code, for planning, for assessing. She's got a ton to do, now we've put all this on her desk. So now the applications go to Amy, Amy has to research and verify all the parts of the application, has to determine who's doing it. Have they had, have they had their sub, their abavements, not abavements, uh, like, homestead exemptions the last 10 years, or you lived here, test to verify all of them, and when she's done, she gets the application, she puts on her recommendation, she sends it back to Burner, Burner has to recommend it, and that's even before we've even done anything, this is gonna go till the end of December. So we've already got 100 applications, I don't have time for, we don't have staff for this. And here's the goofy thing about this LD290, I understand the need for it. But the state implemented this policy without giving us any additional staffing, and now this just overwhelms my staff more. And when they wrote the bill on like, the homestead exemption, where you apply it once and it's good, this is gonna be every year. I don't know what to tell you, but we're, we're overloaded, and, and it's, it's getting to be, this is a nuisance, and not just me, this is the same conversation I'm having with Mike and Elliot, with Duane in North Borough. Everybody's like, well, we don't have anybody, some towns have their clerks do it, and you know, they're, they're busy enough doing what they're doing. So I don't know what to tell you, we're doing the best we can, but you know, when, I only have one administrative assistant, and she handles all correspondence for codes, for planning, for FOIA requests, for things like Mr. Bayes, for all this other stuff, and then we put this on top of her.
Complan.
Complan.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Public Works.
And then we put this on top, we're gonna, we're gonna miss stuff, and it's just, we're flooded in that office right now, and Amy's pulling her hair out. And so there's a burner trying, burner comes in, she has five applications, she's gonna, right now, we've got half of them in a folder that we haven't even touched, and they've been sitting on a desk, and so I just want the council to realize, I guess, that, you know, this probably was a great idea by, by the state, but it was an unfunded mandate that they gave to us that we don't have staffing to do, we didn't have staffing to do. And you know, we're busier on code enforcement, we're busier on planning, we're busier on the planning board. You know, everybody's busy doing stuff, and there's no extra room to do other stuff, and now all of a sudden, this is coming, and this is gonna be repetitive every year to the staff. So, you know, just letting you know that my frustration level as managers, I'm trying to accomplish all the goals, and the water in the job is really murky, we'd like to have clear water for the citizens all the time, but I can't, I don't have enough staff to change the water every day, should speak, you know, the best analogy I can come up with. I don't know what to tell you, we're trying, but we, you know, this just overwhelms our staff.
So for this, for these applications, each applicant has to reapply every year, and then the same cycle?
Yep.
Just continues, okay.
And we're anticipating 300 applications.
Okay.
That's a massive workload on, and I'm, I'm, again, this is the same discussion I've had with managers in Kalamon County, managers in York County, managers next door, you know, it's just, and every time someone brings it in, we're like, oh God, here we go, you know, and we gotta do it, I get it, but I'm just letting you know, it's, it's, that was a terrible system, terrible thing, that, that's how we got implemented from the state.
Is there, I mean, given that this is like an issue that's not just us, that neighboring towns have, like, I don't know what's all involved in it, but is there some opportunity that we could have to like, similar to like, what we have going on with discussing and code enforcement and planning, where we share to have like, perhaps, find one person to kind of, just for this sole responsibility across different towns?
I don't think so, because it's point specific to just your citizen, so. And the, the thing is, we gotta be diligent with doing our research, because if I say to you that I'm not gonna allow your parents in, because, so, you know, we, it's very unique circumstance, we had a case where so a woman who is a certain age applied, or, you know, a family member that she's related to that would have been there, out in the past, but he was eligible, so she eligible, and it's all these things that just become an entangled web, and, and the problem is, we don't have the answer from the state yet. So it, I don't, you know, and no one else, you know, I'm talking to like Elliot, they, they're like, you know, we're just dumping them into a pile and getting to them in the weekend, and, you know, so it's just, just want to let you know, I mean, you wanna add on that, Jim?
It is, it's a lot, and then we haven't even gotten to the point where we're gonna have to start doing the billing, where Burner is gonna have to work with Heather, with the tax billing, Trio, our software has no idea what to do with this yet. So that's a whole other piece, and so we're unsure how we're even gonna track it, and if the software's gonna do it for us, or if we need to do it on the side. So, and to track it and to come up with our commitment at the end of the year to come up with our mill rate, we have to remember that all these people are not moving up with everybody else. So how, how is that all gonna work when it comes to the other side of actually doing the billing? So then none of that's, you know, guidance has come out on that piece of data.
I think like as much like, as, as we could maybe like estimate, I guess, especially around like the application, like processing timeframe, like, how, like roughly, like how long, like, does it take, like, per application or whatever? I think that's probably just like good information, like, not to put more work on, on you and the team and stuff, but just like, sort of keep track of it, because that's something we can bring back to the state to say, hey, you implemented this law, we, we're good with that, but this is now creating this much extra work for us, you know, I don't know.
I'd comment.
Yeah.
I, I think we should go back to the state. But I think what we should be doing is seeking other partner cities and towns to file a suit requesting injunctive relief for this burden that's grown. Uh, what's happening right now, my understanding of this is the fact that the first phase of this is simply to, for qualifying applicants, their tax rate or their tax bill will be fixed at the fiscal, current fiscal year rate. So where it really gonna get filed is in 23, 24, where that's gonna be in the budget process. It's onerous, it's it, it's just unfair of what they've, they've done to us, and I've talked to it before, it's, it's, I'm very concerned that we're gonna lose staff over this. People are just gonna vote with their feet, they're gonna say, okay, yep, you want me to do another? This isn't just a brick on the wall, this is four bricks on the wall. I'll go find another job. And, because it's, it's not just the work, it's the added stress, and then we end up with retention issues in terms of personnel and training, you know, and then getting new people in, it's, it's, it's terrible, and I, I think, I think we should seek that, that, that there is, you know, with some sort of, now, I think MMA is probably gonna be discussing this when they, when their meeting's coming up, we'll, we'll see what happens, but I, I think that that's, that's the only answer, and that is, you know, we, we can appeal to the governor, we can appeal to the legislature, but I think we need to just, you know, stand on our own two feet, as cities and towns, and say, okay, let's go to the courts. And do it collectively.
Well, I just wanted to inform the council that, you know, this has been a burden, and it is, you know, it's been a, it's been a, it has been tough on the employee who has been tasked putting this on, and she's doing the best she can, but she's running behind when you have people asking for FOIA requests, you have people, you know, we, we got wood incentives to write, we've got all this stuff, we've got stormwater, we're gonna take care of, we've got, you know, digsage has to be called for digging, for cul bits, and, I mean, there's only so much staff in town office. And, you know, there's only just so much that we can do at one given time, and we're running, we're failing. And, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can, we don't mean to miss things, but it's, it's critical, and I just think you need to understand how, you know, probably has to have patience with us, because whoa, 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 this, this doesn't help when the state starts doing it, and you know, and this being the first time, nobody comes on the application, says, hit my application, have a good day, see you bye. It's, here's my application, I got six questions on this, and by the way, is that, what, what does this mean? And Barbara's office has got them, correct? And you, so, we have a part-time assessor, so she's over in North Borough, so that automatically goes down to Amy. So there's Amy who's got stormwater, who's got Public Works, who's got code, who's got planning. Now she's got this, and she's pulling her hair out of her head, trying to answer emails, trying to do this, and Jack's right, if this continues, we're gonna lose employees, and we're gonna suffer, we'll suffer greatly though. Town clerk is here, Matt clerk, you wanna talk about gearing up for the elections and your absentee belt stuff?
Oh, that's right up there with tax stabilization. It's only early September, and I already have over 200 absentee belt requests. Um, but it is what it is. We'll go with flow.
And, and so henceforth, again, her office can't take the, this tax stabilization piece.
We don't know the answers, and we keep getting the question.
Yeah.
We give the helpful, unfortunately.
And so, transfer station, new rate increases went into effect on September 1st. New signs have been put up for the rates. And there's a new sign for resident dumping only, Dan says that that has made no commercial dumping, and seems to have been working. We had, they witnessed when we first put the sign up, they witnessed a lot, and they said a significant amount of cars stopping and backing out, and trucks with trailers stopping and backing out, moving. And in fact, I followed one in on a Saturday morning, going in to see how things were going, and it was a pickup truck with a utility trailer full, and like four stone, old snowboards, some old office chairs and a couple of things, and he pulled up, he saw the sign, he stopped, screwed traffic up, but he backed, backed up on the agumenicus and drove off into the lot. So he immediately, he was gonna dump all the stuff, and so, what it is, Dan says it seems to be working and helping. Dan says it seems to be working and helping, uh, and of course, I, I sent you the information, uh, you saw it a while. Uh, finance.
Lots and lots of tax payments are coming in, which is a good thing. I and my staff have been working on year-end duties, account reconciliations, preparing for the audit, a lot of that stuff can't be done. So the last final invoice came in, which I think last meeting, you signed the last warrant, so, um, the audit is next week. And Peter Hall, um, will be coming to the council most likely in December to get his final review, so hopefully they'll all, all next week.
And under admin, Denise started yesterday, uh, she hit the ground running, um, she's got a whole list of things that she's already working on. She's, uh, got a meeting set up on Thursday with the. Attorneys for the TEP projects to get, start updating that. She's making arrangements to get to the brewery, you know, and meet them. She's already working on some grants for police department and grants for public works, so she's hit the ground running and. Doing that, we bought two traffic control signs, they'll be going on Golden Street, one going in, one going out. That seems to be a high traffic area, so we'll, we'll, uh, try them this year, and, you know, look for others. Been working on the town hall project, not necessarily anything specific, just gathering more information.
Are we still having the workshop next week?
Yes, I'm still having a workshop, actually. I've now with four citizens so far, got a new tax assessments and billings and, and their taxes. And they're all surprised when they, well, they're all angry when they come in, and surprised when they leave, they're, they're understanding, they know it, they get it. They're not happy about it, but they, they now have a much better understanding, and all of them have been within about an hour, an hour of the meeting. Some of you might have gotten a phone call, because I had a taxpayer call, said he had friends on the council, so I just wanted to reach out to his friends to see. Who they were and what you could give me for information, but apparently they weren't really friends, I guess, as much as probably plaintiffs, but it worked out good. And, and I always enjoy when they do, because I always get an opportunity to provide them the fact that the lack of. Understanding of tax billing and tax assessments and the town how it works, and what we need to do to change it. I've attended along with police chief and fire chief and a bunch of other people, school safety planning, development meeting, they're, they're developing their emergency response shooting. Been working with code planning for, um, reviewing audences. Last week, we met with Denise, uh, to develop future goals, short term, long term. Tomorrow, we have a monthly school meeting, uh, we'll be resuming now that schools act in session. Been working on emergency action plan for the town hall. So the only, the other part that we've been, I really have been working hard to try to figure out a newsletter for the town, and I think we've kind of. Cap, finally captured it, so we're gonna be able to do it, um, we looked at a lot of others and how they were doing theirs. So, talking to revise, we can build right into our new website, which we're gonna be able to do, actually build into our website and transfer it over. So this is just a rough stab at take one of this. So this is called the South Berwick Journal. Um, it'll be posted monthly, it'll be on our website, anybody can, can access to it once it's posted, it'll stay up there. This is just a, a draft, Dawn is fooling with it, Dawn's gonna be the administrator, um, so it'll start, you know, it'll be like from the desk to the town manager, I'll list whatever. He says, this is just a draft, thank you for, this is the format we're gonna use, it seems to be very friendly, we worked at eight or ten other towns and came up with this. So there'll be, you know, not everybody every month will have stuff, but some people will, from time to time, there might be something you guys wanted from the. From, you know, the table of the town council, and we can put in something, um, there's gonna be little things in there, like there'll be, uh. Community historical questions, once a month, people can answer that, there'll be, uh, spotlight on an employee to talk about who the employee is. There'll just be general updates from different department heads and so forth, and talking about, you know, everything and anything. That we can inform the citizens, so it will come out once a month, it'll be posted right on the website, anybody's gonna be able to grab it, get to it. We'll be looking for different ideas and inputs and thoughts, and we hope it'll be a great success, and it'll be a much better way to, or, or an improved way to. Transit communication to the public, so that they can have a good idea, so it's our, Dawn came up with the name, it's also a journal. And, and so I, I guess I'm looking for your feedback and your thoughts on this.
Yeah, I'm so glad that, um, this is, is moving ahead, um, I'm really excited about it, sorry, what, how did you say this is gonna be posted on the website, will be. Where, will there be like a distribution?
You bring up, go to our website right now. I'll show you where it's gonna, it's gonna live, just, and as soon as you click on the website, yep, see it right there. It's right in front of you, right under the grave, second grave box.
Monthly newsletter.
It's gonna be right there. They used to say town manager box or something, so we eliminated that, it's gonna live there, and then when you click on it, it'll open up, and it'll be. You click right on it, it'll open up, it'll be PDF format, you can read down through it.
We should, um, once it's like actually there, um, the pop-up in the back, cause just cause like. It looks the same as it did before, like it's not gonna jump out, like put the, the little pop-up in the corner to say, check out monthly newsletter on the homepage.
It's gonna be, and every time we put a new one out, we'll put the pop-up box up there, so that's.
But they're supposed to be able to make it so the pop-up doesn't come up on every page.
Fantastic on a phone, I love, great.
This is awesome.
Anyway, that's, we're finally, it's, it's taken a lot of work and effort, gone, spent a lot of hours researching and stuff to get it right, a lot of. Trial and tribulation, but I think we're pretty close, and we're hoping to have the first one out by November, December, probably November, get it out so that we can. And, you know, better have better transparency and information for the public. That's all I have, my down.
Um, all right, council member comments.
Uh, one short one, I've had a request from a couple of residents of my neck of the woods. Possibly see if we could in the future look at putting a center stripe down Hooper Sands. Now that it's seeing the increased amount of traffic that we're seeing with everybody shortcutting through, um, they're not understanding which side of the road they're supposed to be on. It's kinda dangerous out that neck of the woods, um, so you have the one coming up from Agamemnon's Road, Knights Pond Road, and you get to Hooper Sands, and it's just. Nothing, so if we could put a center stripe, that'd be fantastic, that's what they're asking.
I'm gonna piggyback off of that real quick, I know that they're repaving Bell Marsh soon, and I, if, if it's possible to, what?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. But to do the same for, I mean, for any of the backroads, I feel like if, if we're gonna be touching them to add a center stripe would be.
Wasn't in a budget rule to.
Yeah, I'm just, just curious if they would be working on that.
We could do it as a community project, we could get a roller, just walk down the street.
I'm done. Well, one of the great things about having a paint line down the middle of the road, you always know who pays their taxes. They insist on driving down the middle of the road. Anyway, um, I got a couple of things, uh, in the temporary help department, uh, more demand on municipal services, the, the comprehensive plan. Southern Maine, uh, did not budget for data entry of the mail-in service. And again, we don't have staff for this, uh, Southern Maine did not include in their proposal, they proposed on electronic tabulation. Of, uh, you know, so it comes in, uh, so what I think we need to do. Is authorize the town manager to advertise for temporary help. Something that might appeal to. Parents of school-aged children who are staying at home, uh, where they could perhaps work. Like nine thirty-two, so that they, you know, opportunity to make a few bucks, but at the same time, uh, be home. For to send the kids off to school, be home by the time they get home, and, uh, and just offer that as a. As, as a means to do that, again, it's, it's, there's budget involved, and, you know, what do you pay for, for temporary help, but that's the only solution I can think of. That we would need to do to, uh, be able to get this information, we have, Jessica, help me, what, six hundred and ninety?
We have, as of our meeting on August twenty-ninth, we had six hundred and fourteen digital responses and four hundred and thirty-six paper surveys.
Okay, so what, what needs to happen, and, and is training involved, and there's also quality control? Do, do people know how to correctly, it's not something you can, like, say, okay, let's have the senior class do it. You know, we need control over this, because this is foundational to the task of the comprehensive plan, because everything we do. Has to be based on, on what the citizens are asking for, we rely on that, and, and so. When it gets to the end game of that, it's not just six people, seven people, ten people getting together and creating this plan. It's based on what the citizens have reported to us, so it's very important that this thing gets, gets correctly, uh, input and tabulated.
So is it just a paper ones that need to be?
Yes, yes, yeah, so it's, it's that, um, and I, I know, you know, Dawn is very busy, and this is, you know, she's. You know, coordinating other just filing correspondents, but, but to do this is, is gonna be time consuming, and, uh. And, you know, that, again, using the, you know, the flex hours for stay-at-home parents. You know, what I've seen in construction is that, uh, we have people who want the extra money. But also, it ended up being amazing, because we ended up getting highly qualified people, like, you know. Advanced degrees who are just taking care of kids now, but in their former life, they were like a vice president of the bank, and so.
Can I, can I ask a question? What, I, I took the, I did it digitally, and it was a while ago. If, uh, the majority of the questions are multiple choice, right, but we wanna make sure we're also capturing the comments as well. I'm just, just thinking out loud, like when we did, when I did the marijuana survey, they were all paper surveys, and there were, I don't remember how many. Thousands, over a thousand, but like, I have a, an Excel kind of like survey template that I use. To, to then, like I literally sat on my couch and kinda went through all the surveys and, and entered all of that stuff, like I. Well, I'm sort of wondering if like, I could sort of rent her that to accommodate this, but then the comments are another problem.
Google Docs too, so.
Yeah, so, it, I mean, well, the thing that I have goes into Excel, which any, you know, copy paste into.
I'm a little bit distressed hearing this, because we had a meeting on August twenty-ninth for our draft, and they say that. S and PDC would need to strategize about inputting the responses for paper surveys, as they do not have the staff availability for this number of surveys. So I left this meeting under the impression that they were doing a lot of work for us, because they are our consultants. I never once heard from them in, in the lead up to this period that there was any concern about the number of surveys submitted, hard copy. Um, I think that we've heard that they are taxed, we've heard that they need people. But I also understand that putting a part-time person in advertising and doing whatever is an additional punch on the staff that is already orbiting. At capacity, so I, I would like to hear what S and P, S and PDC has done since August twenty-nine to facilitate these hard copy surveys. Before I authorize anything.
I think that's totally fair, I mean, you would think that if that was something, I mean, surely we expected a decent chunk of paper surveys, that's why we did them, and so. To not know that that's not part of the services.
This is a question to somebody, I don't know who, S and PDC, can they get grants for interns? To do stuff like this, don't they have that ability? I know QPCO does, and, and you're describing. Uh, greater council governments, they got interns to do a lot of that, I'm just asking, I don't, but we, uh, we could do it, but. We're gonna hire someone, I'm gonna have to get a computer, I have to get a workspace, I don't have any more workspace, or, you know, it's, it's an inconvenience for me.
Jessica, we hired a company to do a job.
Yeah.
It's on them, if they gotta hire somebody, why is that on the top? Why are we paying for it? We already paid him. Fix it, that's what we paid him to do.
I guess, oh yeah, I, I, I was waiting for other things to percolate on that particular topic. So, I guess we'll know more on the twenty-sixth of September when we meet at six PM here. Again, uh, keep taking yacht sail signs off the Soldier and Sailor, Sailor Memorial. At the corner of Golden and Agamemnon's.
That guy's very upset with you. Very upset with you.
Oh, good.
No, no, Jack, I, I explained to him on three different occasions, that he can't put signs there, I, I explained it to him.
Okay, but again, just reaching out to the public and saying, this is, really, it's, it's a cemetery, and, uh, and should be treated the same way. It's not right, um, we talked about LD two ninety, um, comment on the Great Hill. Five-odd subdivision, don't know anything about it, um, I just would hope that, that, that this is being built with, with, um. The South Berwick Water District water.
Yes, they, that, I think that was part of the speculation, because of the watershed it sits on, yeah, so I, I believe that was part of the, uh.
Line's already been up and running.
Yeah.
It was done last year.
Okay, so they're, it's on, it's on, it's not gonna be a wolf, it's, it's a same deal.
It's still up, it's still up for dating, that's not, it's not set, so. They bring the line up and over the hill, they're not gonna use it? Okay, the last planning board meeting, they went over it extensively, it doesn't go right to this property, so.
This is because of the, um, environmental issue, right? I mean, I feel like we need to require that they use that for a bar, given that situation.
We went through this, remember?
Yeah, yeah.
And we did nothing about it, cause the state wouldn't do anything about itself.
There was a neighbor that on the last planning board meeting, who said that they essentially received a letter from the state that said, cement up your well. And that was after, you know, after they purchased their home, there was nothing disclosed, and now they're like, well, we'll keep testing until things get bad. And, and I feel for them, because I feel like we should put in protections for new developments, so that later on down the line, it doesn't spread.
The planning board is working, uh, to, I think, I do think that they're pushing or requiring as a. Extra requirement, um, that. It's on the deed, so it does get handed down, um, but as far as the water is concerned, I can't remember that what happened on that meeting. And so, there. The way I believe it was left was that the developers were open to. Connecting, however, however, in my opinion, from watching, it seemed like they were more. They felt better about putting a couple of test wells that could be checked over time, but valid arguments were brought up against. Uh, not that those wells wouldn't necessarily protect the wells of the houses. So, a lot, a lot of information there, so, it's a kind of up in the air from what I've seen, however, the planning board does seem to be. Trying to push towards public.
Quick question, how, how? Sorry, John, uh, one twenty-three voice corner, how do we not run our wells dry with continuously running lines throughout the town? I mean, we've already had problems with the wells running dry as it is, so. I'm sorry? The town wells, how, how do they not run dry with all the pipes that are going in and feeding all these houses?
It's a question for the water district.
All right, so.
But the question, again, it's just a, you know, my, my comment that is a documented, uh, chemical. In, in, in the bedrock, that's, that's heavier than water, can't be cleansed, it's sitting there. Uh, uh, concentrations that exceed drinking water standards, so. Uh, and that's, uh, that's it, uh, I'd also like to thank the council for adding yet another meeting. That's all right, I'll show.
Speaking of that, Jack, I, I think I mentioned this to you before, but, uh, you'll have one final. speaking of that, Jack, I, I think I mentioned this to you before, but, uh, you'll have one final meeting that you can chair before you retire too on October eleventh. So I won't be able to be here.
Pile on. In for penny, in for pound.
Um, anything else for you?
Pressure's enormous.
Sorry about that. Uh, Jeff?
Oh. Um, well, speaking of the planning board meeting, I know there's been some conversations, uh, that I've been, I've heard about. And then last week, I was at the planning board meeting. Uh, and an application was put in for a new restaurant downtown. And this, the conversation got me to thinking about my time on the, uh, Lower Main Street revitalization. And started looking there and, um, thinking about where we are as a town now with our new ethnical developer and, um, you know, planner and everybody that's come in and then after hearing Tim saying he's just floating in time uh, with everybody now. Uh, no, I, I would like to put on the, uh, the agenda for next meeting to re-address the revitalization committees, the ad hoc committee's findings. Cause we did have a workshop, but from that workshop, I don't believe any actions were actually taken. And I'd like to have this council maybe recircle the wagons and put some meat behind, uh, maybe another, um, proposal or, um, asking the planning board to work.
Well, that, that should go into what, what we should, so the next year, we can do, we can budget this year. So next year we'll be budgeting for a, a natural downtown revitalization plan, which will come with an economic tip difference. So that, that low mainstream would just wrap into that, that whole thing. I mean, you can certainly do, you know.
The concern I have here is that the findings found by our ordinances need to, need to be revamped. And I'm not sure that that, that happened.
Right, so that's different. That's, that's different than a downtown one.
Absolutely. It was the, that was what the name of the ad hoc committee was. And we, the findings were that our ordinances weren't necessarily jiving and talking to, and it was a while ago, so.
It's like the shorelands.
Yeah, the shoreline, the way Driscoll Brook runs in, the way Salmon Falls River and the size of those. And then on top of that, the land coverage of development. And I'm just, um, I would like to be able to get us together, um, and discuss where we'd like to move in the future as far as if we need to revamp the ordinances, cause then I think that is for the planning board, if I'm not correct.
Oh, yeah, comments?
Yeah.
It occurred to me, and we did the things to do for Tim when he came on board, we, we didn't add that. So in a way to make up for that, I got together with Jeanne DiRicco, who was also, I think she co-chired, uh, with Paul Stein, and you were there and I was there. So I forwarded to Tim the, the notes that, and those findings to Tim, so that when the council sits and, and formulates a, another list of things to do, you know, sitting down collectively with the manager.
Yeah.
At that point in time, that can be included and prioritized.
Okay.
That was my trust.
Yeah, my concern was that knowing Denise was that, was on, that would be all looking towards, all right, how are we gonna do this? And this might be a robot. And I think it is just kind of us.
I think like, so if I'm hearing you correctly, Jeff, like the concern that you have is specifically planning board zoning stuff to make sure that things are talking to each other appropriately. For our purposes, for the council's purposes, and forgive me if I'm supplying too much, but like, this is simply a, hey, planning board, we need you to look into this kind of conversation, right? So putting together a charge together for them. And also given what Tammy was saying earlier, with their sort of capacity, like we're probably looking not till like mid-November, so before they would even be able to look at anything. So I think like Jack's suggestion of that sort of like jiving, right around December timeframe, early December, we usually sit down and talk about like, okay, what do we need to tackle for the next whatever, next, the next year, we can be sure to include that as part of that, which then Ted, what, you know, sort of Tim would go onto your plate, which then goes onto your staff's plate. Does that make sense?
Do you have doc, I, I, I have Jack's up. Do you have something else that, you have like a whole set of documents that and reference it that we can staff? Because two people from my staff that would get this would be the planner and obviously the economic developers, which is anything we can give them to a heads up sooner. But my, my problem with planners, remember, I only get her two days' leave and, and she's maxed out currently with all the stuff she's got. Right, you know, some division, it's open. So, but I certainly, you know, certainly on our end, we'll do what we can to. I am, but, but that's where we go. We go the planner and the economic developer. And I'll be glad to pass it on to them. If, I think I had those doctors from Jack, but if Jack could resend them to me.
Oh, oh, I was just looking at it right now. And what I'll do is I'll copy you to.
And then I'll, I'll at least print them off and give them to them and say, you know, in, in your purgatory world next year.
Yeah.
Probably this is gonna come to you somewhere in here, cause ideally the one would be Tim. That's Tammy's thing. If, if the, if there's a planning board needs help with the ordinance, that's what Tammy is planning for. So she would be the one to stop working on that, but I could just, you know, so just telling you, her plate's full till, like she said, mid-November.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we just were crazed out with everything.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's fine. My, my only thing, um, is just moving forward, I'd, I'd like to see motion and movement on it. And I just wanted to make sure that we did the right, we had the first right step, the right first step, that's all, whether it was us or whether it's getting into.
Essentially the dogs.
But I, uh, Jack's right though. I mean, I think you, or you guys are right, you know, you, you would have tasks, send it to the cast of planning boards first. I think, you know, it, it lives in Tammy's world. It'd be, and once it gets a planning board, that would be, we'd go to Tammy's desk and it's open.
So I think we can, I, I don't, I don't feel like this is like a super long discussion that we need to have, but more so just maybe on our, on our next agenda, we can just have an item to, you know, just kind of like briefly review the results from the ad hoc committee and then kind of pass it along to the planning board, Tammy, to, to go, to take a look into.
Put it on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's it called? Low Main Street Study?
Revitalization.
Revitalization, their ad hoc committee finding.
But, but specifically just the zoning portion of that, like the related work or.
Right, not about how we're gonna revive lives.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wanna incorporate that at a later point once we're talking about it. Yeah.
Thank you for hearing me. Sorry if I didn't make it. And then, um, just, uh, my last thing is again, just to, uh, there's a lot of stuff going on in town. And I know we all have our lives. I apparently have a boring one, uh, cause I'm at the planning board meetings, yeah. But there's a lot of information and a lot of moving parts. And the stuff that we talked about today about planning board, uh, is only a little piece of it. And then that moves and changes as it goes. So anybody that wa, that wants to watch and look at their, um, recordings, I encourage people to, because there's a lot of good information, a lot of good work happening. Even though we do get frustrated with it at times too, so that's all. Thank you.
Uh, I've been sitting along with Jeff on the planning board meetings. It was very well attended, the last one. I want to compliment Braxton, who are on running just fantastic meetings, keeping very straight to the point. I do hear Tim saying our planner is at capacity, we have a part-time planner, you know, you've probably gotta move forward some full-time staff and getting some additional headcount to increase your capacity. Um, we chatted about the school board budget a couple of meetings ago, so I took my daughter down to the school board meeting on August twenty fourth. And Mr. Cavalry graciously invited me to attend the town and district meeting date, so I'll be attending along with, um, Tim and Jen tomorrow. And, um, I also took a couple of hours just to pull together, um, being a newer counselor, being on my first year in my term. Um, just thinking about what I needed to know coming in as a counselor. So I provided some commentary to Tim, um, to kind of sit on.
So that, 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 yeah, man, I addressed the council for a moment. But I think one of the issues that, that I think I need to bring you to your attention real quick so we can get out of here is I think that when we get new councils on, we, we develop, I'll develop a packet where we can get them some information. But also I think the council should make it by vote, which you can, a, a policy practice that new councils are required within a certain amount of time, three months, six months, to get the the MMA train. Along with that same line, I think you ought to, I, I would request you do the same thing for planning board. It's a liability to have someone become an elected official and never give them any training, but yet they oversee the personnel budgets, finances for and or backline and decision-making processes where they often get out of someone's life. You know, the, the building permits, whatever, and not understand the requirements of their position and we never offer them training. MMA has a very good training. You know, we recently have had some planning board hiccups, including, um, uh, expert take communications, so, which is addressed in the MMA training. So I would like to see the council, uh, tonight, but at a later date, pass a a practice procedure that says, okay, the, that, you know, the planning board within six months and the council, new councils within six months will take these trains. They're free. You know, we can zooms it by Zoom, and I think they offer a good place where we start to train and give them some education and help reduce some liability. You can't expect people to do this without any kind of training. I just don't think it's realistic.
I agree. I think that's a great idea.
Just echoing what, what Tim is saying, the, the manuals are terrific. Cause you know, there's, there's case studies in there, just basically how to do it. And, uh, I, I second exactly what he's saying.
Uh, put that on a general related time or ask you to make calls.
Great. That's it. Thank you. Um, the only thing that I have is, I'm regarding, um, executive sessions. This is kind of a, kind of for the council. Um, executive sessions that we typically host for, um, board interviews, the planning board, conservation committee, et cetera. Um, given that we're now at the police station, we don't necessarily have the greatest location to host those executive sessions. From what I understand, there's nothing in our charter that requires us to interview board members in an executive session. Um, so what I would like to suggest is that going forward, instead of doing them in an executive session, we just make it an agenda item and say, you know, agenda item, um, interview so-and-so for X committee. And, you know, we can ask them to join us at our meeting that day and ask our few questions and call again. Anyone have any concerns with that practice before?
That's how I needed, you know, tell those, and they just took it up and it was generated, but there's needs or.
Okay.
The same way we used to do it here.
Okay.
Are the applications public information?
Yes. All right, we will do that. Go forward. So Barbara, I know we have one, we could just do that for two weeks from now.
I'll make sure she is known.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, and then I think go forward to, just, we can just roll with that same thing, just throw them on the agenda whenever we get them. Okay. Thank you. That's all that I had. Anyone else?
Chairman, move me to your second.
I'll just, if I may, say aye. Aye. Any post?
I'll get your plugs and some doubts.
Thanks, everyone.
So I'm the maintenance guy. Trust me, you're getting harder for me too.
From the church or down, not, not, not down, but over the river, Jack. That would be horrible.
Wrong.
Where is it looking?